Ready, but I ended up eating it anyway.
Can't hardly eat before I come.
Oh, I have to eat, otherwise I'll just die.
Well, yeah, but you've been working all day.
I'm gonna check notes on here, so I guess I shouldn't.
Oh, wow, that's weird.
That's good.
Do I need notepads? Because usually they have notepads.
We have notepads and pens. Are they in the cabinet up here? Uh, notepads and pens for everybody.
Because I was guaranteeing.
I'm sorry?
I was kept on that.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Sorry.
The chair is prepared for class.
Thank you. Thank you. He is.
I hate saying myself on TV.
I do, too. My skin. At the other place, I look better. Here, I look orange.
Yeah.
It's like I went to a big tan.
All right, we'll call to order the Planning Commission work session for the City of Oregon City, Monday, March 13th, 2023. Uh, you can take your role, please.
Chair Stoll.
Here.
Vice Chair Schlagenhoffer.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner LaSalle.
Here.
Commissioner Laws.
Here.
Commissioner Espy.
Here.
Commissioner Staggs, absent with email.
All right, discussion from Ms. Reed, or staff first, either way.
Yes, thank you. So we had a request, I don't know, earlier this year to receive some additional training on specific to around, specifically around housing and the various bills that you'll hear. You'll hear reference to Senate Bill 8 or House Bill 2001 or different things kind of thrown about. And so I reached out to our rep at DLCD, who's Kelly Reed, and she and her coworker, who are online, are, and I believe that is Thea, am I saying that?
Thea.
Thea? Okay. Thea's online, and they will present just kind of overview of housing and talk about some of the legislation that's gone through and a little bit of what's going through and open it up for questions. So we'll pass it over to Kelly.
Thanks, Aquila, and thank you Chair Stoll and Oregon City Planning Commission. It's really great to be here, see some familiar faces, and appreciate your time today. And I am here with Thea Croman, or Thea Croman, who's Housing Policy Analyst at DLCD, and we're going to kind of talk to you about housing planning in Oregon City and at the state level and kind of how all those are connected. And so we'll get into a little bit of statistics about the current kind of housing crisis, and we hopefully will go fast enough to have enough time for your questions. So let's see. Can we get the PowerPoint up, please? Thea, did you want to introduce yourself before we dig into the presentation?
Sure, you go ahead, everybody. Thank you so much for having me, knowing you for this. And I'm sorry, I can't be there in person calling in from Eugene. So this is great, obviously, flexibility. And so, yeah, Kelly and I will just walk you through some of what's going on at the state level, and then, yeah, hopefully have some time for a conversation afterwards. Yeah, go ahead, Kelly.
Okay, so first, just so we all kind of understand where we're coming from, where Thea and I are coming from, we want to just describe our agency to you. So we are with the Department of Land Conservation and Development, DLCD. It's a state agency in the executive branch of the state of Oregon. We were created through Senate Bill 100 back in the 70s as part of the statewide land use planning program. So we have a body of appointed folks called the Land Conservation and Development Commission. So all the staff at DLCD kind of answer to them. And DLCD has been charged by the legislature with managing urban growth, protecting farm and forest land, protecting coastal areas, natural resources lands, and working with local governments, like yourselves, to implement the statewide land use planning program. And we do that through review of your comprehensive plan and then your subsequent amendments to your comprehensive plans, and through making grants available to local governments. So we've, over the years, DLCD and Oregon City have worked together on a number of projects through grants that we've provided to Oregon City. I'm a regional representative with DLCD, and so I'm assigned to the Clockmouth County and Multnomah County areas of the state. There are other regional representatives for other regions in the state, and so I'm your kind of main point of contact at DLCD, and Thea is specifically working on housing at DLCD. I do want to make sure it's clear also that DLCD is no way part of the legislature. So the legislature, of course, is passing lots of, lots of new laws that we'll talk about today. And sometimes those, that legislation tells cities to do things, and sometimes it tells DLCD to do things. So we kind of look to the legislature for, for a lot of that, the same way you do. Okay, so now I'm going to pass it over to Thea. And Thea, would you just let me know when you would like me to change this slide, please?
Sure, yeah, go ahead. So, yes, as, as. We'll just hang out on this one, no problem. Yes, yeah. So, all right, I'll just jump right in. I wanted to start, start this conversation with you all just by pulling back a little bit and talking about sort of the state of housing in Oregon and nationally, which, because you guys have probably heard, it's being referred to as a crisis, and it truly is. So we'd start with basically the why of why are we, why are we in a housing crisis? And the answer is essentially very simple. There are simply two houses. And, you know, I've heard analysts compare it to like musical chairs, where, you know, the music, there's just not enough. Music stops someone, or several thousand people will be left out. You know, put it another way, because we are grownups, the cause is really a mismatch between demand and supply. And really, the shortage is not equitably distributed. So lower-income households and communities of color suffer sort of the blunt end of that shortage at a really disproportionate rate. So where did the shortage come from? Really historic under production.
Can I, you know, you're really echoey and hard to understand.
Oh, thank you for letting me know. I will give you a minute.
I don't know what we can.
I can't hardly understand her.
Yeah, Thea, we're having a hard time understanding you, and we often have audio issues in this room, but if you have something else to try.
Sure. Is this, does this sound better?
Yeah.
Wait, okay. Let's go with this, and let me know, just jump right in if anything sounds or looks wrong. Yeah, so I'm just sort of talking about where the shortage came from. Starting in the 70s, we simply produced less housing, and this really dropped off following the Great Recession. Just sort of, the housing production bottomed out. There's been a long-term lack of investment in developing skilled trades. So on the workforce side, it's really, really about looking at how to develop more, more labor. And this was all, of course, really exacerbated in the pandemic by supply chain issues. So really, basic economics, shortages drive costs up. Our goal on the housing team at DLCD is to support an abundance of housing, which really will allow costs to come down. So we can go ahead to the next slide. I am going to run through some graphs and graphics that help illustrate the condition that we're in with housing across the state and nationally a little bit. This one here shows how real home prices in Oregon cities are approaching or exceeding the highest levels that were reached during the housing bubble. And I'd expect to see this sort of leveling off a little bit lately, but still, you know, extremely high. We can go to the next slide. This one here is data from the Portland Metro showing the drop in home affordability and how the share of households for whom the median price would put them in a circumstance called cost burden, meaning that they pay a greater, pay greater than 30% of their income for housing. That share of households is growing kind of rapidly. Next slide. So these graphics help contextualize the problem nationally. The pie chart represents different categories of extremely low-income renter households. I think this one is worth taking a minute with, just to really think about who we're talking about. It's seniors, disabled folks, and people who are working, the working poor. The bar chart on the right shows homes that are available in each income bucket. And you can see, if you look at the top, this is 100% of average median income. Even at 100%, there are not enough homes, and the supply decreases dramatically as you go down the ladder. We can go to the next slide. So this graphic digs into the concept of cost burden a little bit more. And again, that's, that's where, when a household is spending more than 30% of their income on housing. And the condition is really pretty widespread in Oregon and elsewhere in the country, of course, but Oregon is, is, is high. Oregon City looks similar to your neighbors, and we do want to recognize that this, this graph is a little bit out of date. We know that current numbers are reflecting what is hopefully a trend in the right direction, so big kudos. Kelly did a great job of breaking out some actual numbers, so you can see what this looks like on the ground over here in these gray boxes. All right, go on to the next slide. So responding to this state of crisis and the current shortage of what is now 140,000 units across the state, on her first day in office, Governor Kotak issued Executive Order 2304, along with three other housing-related EOs. 2304, among other things, established a statewide housing production goal of 36,000 units per year. This is, this is really big, particularly considering we're, we're building about 20,000 per year right now, so this is almost close to double the current production. It also established the Housing Production Advisory Council to identify and recommend policies that speed and support production, and that council is stakeholders, legislators, and agency folks from across agencies all coming together to really work on the barriers that are there. Importantly, and this is noted here on the slide as well, more than half of the new housing that will be built under, under this effort has to be affordable to people making 80% or less of area median income. So, and Kelly's done a great job here of breaking out what those numbers actually look like in the metro region. So take a look at that, and we can move on to the next slide. This is a good time to review State Land Use Goal 10, which is housing. And you on the Planning Commission may know this, but a lot of people don't. Goal 10 of Oregon's land use goals enshrines the obligation of the state to provide housing for the need, for the needs of citizens and at specific price levels that are accessible to all Oregonians. But in sort of over the decades since, since this goal was, was described, it's turned into more of an accounting exercise than a guidepost. And we'll talk a little bit later in this presentation about recent and current executive and legislative, legislative action that's really refocusing on the original intention of Goal 10. Okay, we can, we can move on. So I also want to take a minute to acknowledge that cities don't build housing, and we, we know that. We recognize that there are a lot of things that are outside of cities' control. This graphic kind of demonstrates what those are. However, there are also a lot of ways that cities can support housing, and, and we at DLCD really want to support them here. So that's, that's the focus. So this, this slide sort of shows you some of the places that cities can jump in. Public policy, land, infrastructure, and even to some extent, market feasibility. There are tools for cities in, in all of those areas. Okay, let's go to the next slide. So 2019's House Bill 2003 was a sort of first effort to restructure how the state approached Goal 10 planning housing and how to support cities in doing the work to develop housing, to do the work that is actually within their power to develop housing. So you all have, have started this process, and so you know some of this, and just want to make sure so that you, you get the big sort of broad swath, the big picture. HB 2003 directed cities over 10,000 to study the future housing needs of their residents and really develop strategies that encourage the production of their, of housing, of the housing that their residents need. So you start here with a population projection, then you move into your housing capacity analysis, which used to be called Housing Needs Analysis, and I promise we're not just trying to confuse you. I get confused about this one all the time, too. So it's an HCA now, it used to be an HNA. So first, you project housing need based on the population projection, then you inventory your buildable lands. After that, you accommodate needed housing, and that either looks like utilizing efficiency measures, identifying and utilizing efficiency measures, which means building within your UGB to create greater density, to find, find places for those houses to be. And once you sort of run up against the limits of that, looking at UGB expansions to accommodate needed housing. After you go through the HCA process, you move into your HPS process, which is your housing production strategy. And those, we'll talk about a little bit more, I think, in the next slide or a bit after, about, about what that process is going to look like. I think Oregon City has gone through the first part of this, that you've done a housing capacity analysis. You haven't yet done a housing production strategy. It's brand new for the state. So we can go on to the next slide, and I think Kelly will talk a little bit more about what this looks like on the ground here.
Yeah, so thanks, Thea. As, as Thea said, Oregon City did complete Housing Needs Analysis in 2021. And of course, when we say, as she said, Housing Capacity Analysis, Housing Needs Analysis, same thing. We're just using the term capacity now for new documents of this type. So in 2021, you essentially found that Oregon City's current UGB has just about enough land to accommodate the next 20 years' worth of housing demand. So there was a slight deficiency found in the high-density residential. I'm sure you all, you're all familiar with this. You can go on to the next slide, please. But what's really interesting, I think, about the Housing Needs Analysis is that it showed a big difference in what types of housing units the, you'll see in the future compared to what you have in the city today. So today, or at least in 2021, when the study was done, you had 74% of your housing stock is detached units, detached, single-family, 20% multifamily, and only 6% were what we call middle housing types, townhomes, duplexes, things like that. For the next 20 years, your development of housing types is going to be more like the graph on the right. So this is what you're, you're planning for, is 50% detached and a lot more middle housing types, about the same amount of multifamily. And that responds directly to the income levels that you, you'll see in the future. You can go to the next slide, please. So this is another graphic I pulled from your Housing Needs Analysis. Shows the future households in the next 20 years and what their income breakdown looks like. And you can see that 47%, so almost half of these new households, are projected to have a median family income of 80% of the median or less, which means they're really going to need housing units that the market really doesn't provide on its own. So I've got a picture here of Los Flores Project, sorry, Housing Development that's under construction right now in Oregon City over by Maple Lane and Beaver Creek Roads. I'm sure you've seen this and heard a lot about it. It's going to provide 170 units of affordable housing for people making between 30% and 60% of the area median income. So those folks are represented kind of in that second bar on the bar graph, under the very low income. And as you can see, over the next 20 years, Oregon City will need to see construction of a lot more housing developments like that, or serving that income level in order to kind of meet the need that you'll have. And, and that's kind of why more, a bigger proportion of the housing units will not be single-family detached, because as we know, those houses are being sold for $700,000 these days in Oregon City, right? So you can move on to the next slide, and this is one's back to Thea.
Yeah, thanks, Kelly. I think that's really helpful to see, you know, to be able to see what this, what the system looks like when applied to your city. So that is really important grounding. This here on the screen is the most recent, recently adopted Housing Capacity Analysis schedule. So LCDC adopted this in January. And this shows you sort of where Oregon City is in the HCA process. You will, Oregon City will do a new housing capacity analysis once every six years. And we can move to, so you did, your next one will be due in 2027. You can see it's highlighted here. And, yeah, next slide is good. In 2028, you will, your housing production strategy will be due. This is, this is, this is sort of the, the menu in brief of what, what housing production strategies are going to look. And there's nothing stopping you from doing these, doing these things. In the meantime, it's great public policy. Go get credit down the line. But just know that, that you're slated to do this, to get this document turned in by 2028. So, yeah, again, this slide breaks down sort of the different categories. DLCD is working on expanding this into a, into what is essentially a menu. And then you will be able to sort of pick and choose which, which strategies are the most effective, getting you, your city to, to meet the future needs. Essentially, what DLCD will be looking for and working with cities on this is a good faith effort to produce the number and mix of, of housing that your community needs and providing a lot of support along the way. We also want to note that, like, the strategies are not static. They can shift over time. And what we're really looking for is that cities commit to addressing the housing need, trying these things, and, but not necessarily sticking with a specific strategy if it doesn't work. Again, you have a long time to, to think about this, to consider what will work best for you, and I'm sure that we look forward to working with you on this in the future. And we can talk more about it after the presentation. You can do the next slide. At this point, I'm going to try to give you a rundown of some of the big housing legislation that's happened over the past few years. There is a lot, like, much, too much to cover here. And there's also a lot going on right now, so this will all change. But this is, this is where we're at right now. A lot, a lot of really good work has been done, and this is sort of the greatest hits and those that I know that this commission has an interest in. So we'll start here with the original HB 2001, the Middle Housing Bill. This really was about allowing housing choices via zoning reform through smaller unit typologies that Kelly was still just talking about, townhouses, duplexes, triplexes, quads, and cottage clusters on all parcels that allow single-family houses. So cities were required to adopt Middle Housing Code or allow the model code to take effect. And we were really pleased to see it, but I think all but two cities adopted their own code that was sort of above and beyond the minimum standards. Important to note here that cities can impose siting and design standards. And this is, this photo is just an example of sort of, here's, here's what middle housing can look like. We're not talking about giant multiplexes here. This is, this is friendly, this is friendly density, as we, as we call it sometimes. So next slide. SB 8 was passed in 2021. This one really responded to an urgent need for affordable housing. This made it easier for public housing authorities, nonprofit organizations, and religious institutions to push affordable housing projects through local zoning and conditional use development processes. So it requires that local governments allow the development of certain affordable housing on, on lands not zoned for residential uses. It allows the establishment of certain affordable housing at an increased density. And I think responding to a question we got from the commission, it does not actually require a code amendment, and DLCD recommends that the city just point to state regulations on this. And again, cities can apply design standards here. Next slide. So HB 2006 was another bill cast by the legislature in 2021. This one authorizes cities to cite emergency shelters as long as certain conditions are met. Citing approvals under HB 2006 are not actually land use decisions, and cities must approve an emergency shelter for operation on any property as long as it meets certain conditions. And if you're interested, we could talk about those conditions later on, but I don't think we need to take time here. Next slide. So moving into the present, keep an eye on this one. Very confusingly, also called HB 2001, the housing bill. This one is moving through really quickly as part of the 60-day package. And it's expected, I think, to be on the governor's desk within the next few days, maximum like a week. So this, you'll hear more about this soon. If passed, it will, among other things, there's a lot in this bill, but for, in terms of sort of the DLCD side of this, this, it codifies the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis, the ONA, which identifies gaps in meeting current and projected housing needs and really works to empower cities to take meaningful action to increase production, choice, and affordability. And we will come back to you and talk to you more about this if it passes. For now, I'll just say that the, the core purpose of the ONA is really a system-wide reform of Goal 10 planning that focuses on achieving housing production. The Office of Economic Analysis will essentially allocate targets, housing targets, to all local governments. And sort of as you do now, even with the same system, cities over 10K will, will adopt HCAs, HPSs, and then make trackable progress towards those targets. And DLCD will work with cities to identify barriers and ensure that goals are met. Again, we can talk a little bit more about that. I think that, you know, that once- its own full presentation. So we, yeah, we'll come back. And just really quickly, a few other recent pieces of legislation. I don't have slides for these that you might have come across, and I'll just talk you through them. So you may have heard HB 4064. This one is, allows the citing of manufactured homes or prefab homes, essentially anywhere that stick-built homes are allowed, and it prohibits like unique placement standards or other kinds of design requirements on, on manufactured homes inside and outside of manufactured home dwelling parks. So it basically, excuse me, means that manufactured houses must be treated precisely the same as stick-built houses. HB 2918, that requires governments to identify surplus property within a UGB or rural residential area every two years, every, the first of, the first of every year, every even numbered year. So something to be aware of. HB 3261, the conversion of property as a hotel or motel to emergency shelter or to affordable housing. And you may have heard of this one. And essentially, it just does exactly what the title of it says, allows the conversion of a property from use as a hotel or motel into affordable housing or an emergency shelter. I'm actually going to turn it back to Kelly here to talk about clear and objective standards. And then we will be close to finishing up.
Thanks. Two more slides, and then we can answer as many questions as you have. And, you know, Thea just listed off a few more pieces of legislation that we didn't have slides for. But DLCD does publish, after every legislative session, we publish like a cheat sheet, basically, of, you know, any legislation that affects local government planning, you know, links to it, a summary of what it requires of local governments. And so that's something that's on our website that, that, you know, we share with your staff when we provide it. So all of this that we've talked about is part of one, you know, whatever year it was passed, it's part of that document. And then we try to provide guidance to local governments on, you know, how to best implement some of these new state laws as they come. Another action that the state has taken, you know, at the state level related to housing is a statute that requires clear and objective standards. I know you guys know about this, and you talked about it recently, probably with your city attorney, but I just want to tie it kind of to goal 10 directly. So this statute requires local governments adopt and apply clear and objective standards, conditions, and procedures regulating the development of needed housing. Now, needed housing is all housing. And we, we know, so going back to goal 10, right? We had that slide. It said specifically, local plans shall encourage the production or the availability of adequate housing. So it's not just about zoning land for residential uses and calling it good. You know, it's, it's really about encouraging, going a little beyond that. And so that's what the whole goal 10 program is about. But as, I think, as we all know, in the past, cities have erected barriers to housing in the form of subjective development standards in some cases. Case in point, the, in the blue box there, an example of a standard's not clear and objective, "Development shall not alter the character of the surrounding neighborhood." Now, I know Oregon City is not guilty of this one in particular. I know you all have really good clear and objective standards, but, but a lot of this code language is found still, and certainly in the past was part of codes, development codes. And while there, it may not have initially been intended to limit housing, it's certainly resulted in that, right? There's neighborhood opposition, housing gets denied, then there are court battles. And so here we are with the shortage of housing. So one of the things that, you know, the state legislature has, has done is say, we can't have these type of standards anymore that, that result in this housing shortage. So clear and objective standards apply to any housing development, subdivision, site plan, design reviews, including public work standards too, like utilities and streets. Cities can provide multiple pathways, right? So you have to provide a clear and objective pathway. And believe me, every city in Oregon is dealing with this and trying to make, go through their codes and making sure that everything's clear and objective. You can have one pathway that's clear and objective. You can have a secondary path that a applicant can take that involves discretion. So in Oregon City, an example is you have your clear and objective process for a subdivision or an apartment building. Or if you, if an applicant wants to deviate from those standards that you have, they can apply for variance. They come to the planning commission, you use discretionary criteria or subjective criteria. Last thing I want to say about clear and objective standards is that clear and objective does not necessarily have to mean easy. So clear and objective is, you know, a numerical standard, right? 50 feet height limit, 200 square feet of open space per unit with open space clearly defined, right? In Eugene, they have a code that says you cannot have any, you cannot do any grading on a slope that's 20% or greater. That's, that's a difficult standard, right? Luba said, it's okay. It's clear and objective, right? So it doesn't have to be easy. You know, if you're protecting natural resources, public safety, of course, you know, you can have this strict standard. And then you can have a discretionary path. So in Eugene, they also have a discretionary path where someone can bring in geological and geotechnical studies and then be able to do some grading on a steep slope. So next slide, please. So to bring, bring it back and give a little recap, on the to-do list for cities is adopting housing capacity analysis and housing production strategy per the schedule that Thea provided. So in Oregon City, that's 2027 and 2028. Ensuring that your zoning provides for ample capacity and that your code is encouraging that development of housing, that your development codes are clear and objective. Reporting data to DLCD, so DLCD is now tracking housing production in every city. So we're collecting data from, from every city annually on the building permits issued and new housing units approved. So, and we, we are setting up a dashboard on our website to, you know, provide that information publicly. And then, of course, implementing the strategies in your housing production strategy. And I have some examples here, and the interesting thing about these examples is none of these cities have actually adopted a housing production strategy yet, but they are proactively doing these things as just good public policy. So in Tiger, they're waiving transportation and park SDCs for regulated affordable housing. And well, Milwaukee, they're providing incentives and then backfilling that, like backfilling SDCs by using a construction excise tax, for example. In Newport, they adopted variable rate SDCs. And in Lake Oswego, they're identifying properties that are owned by the city and then making those available for affordable housing development. Now, Oregon City's comprehensive plan, actually, that you all just, just approved, new comprehensive plan goals and policies actually have some really similar kind of language in there about housing. So you have goal two, which is provide housing options, including both rental and ownership attainable to a full range of Oregon City households. And then more specifically, your strategy 24B is provide incentives for affordable housing. Strategy 25D is investigate variable rate SDCs. So clearly, you all have been thinking about this stuff too, just like these cities have. And so you're kind of well on the path. And so we look forward to kind of working with you as you continue kind of analyzing these options. And then, of course, when you do your formal housing production strategy too. So I think that's all we've got, and we hopefully have time for some questions.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Commissioner Musson.
In the one slide, or Thea was talking about proposed legislation that's going on right now at the Capitol. And she was talking about, something about either surplus lands or surplus housing. What is the definition, definition of surplus lands and how does that apply to Oregon City?
Thea, did you hear that?
That's a, it's a term I'm not familiar with.
I think you're muted.
I'm muted?
Is she on mute?
I don't believe, I'm not muted on my end.
Now we can hear you.
You can hear me? Okay. Kelly, I don't know if you've had experience working with surplus lands. As far as I know, this is like government-owned properties. And I think that it, I mean, I think that it really doesn't apply super broadly, but I would be happy to sort of circle back and dig deeper into what, what that refers to. Kelly, do you have experience navigating that at all?
Yeah, it is, it is government-owned property. And, you know, I think the legislation has more detail about what has to be included. And so there, there is kind of a map, actually, on the web where everybody that, every jurisdiction that has submitted their surplus lands is, you know, those are showing up on the maps now. So you can kind of see different parcels throughout the state of Oregon that are part of these surplus lands. So it's really just a process of identifying those. And there's not any obligation to do anything with them, but even just identifying them and making that information public could potentially result in, you know, some partnerships to develop those with housing, perhaps.
So for instance, Oregon City owns property downtown on our main street. There are empty lots. Is that surplus lands or is that just lots that haven't been built yet? The Urban Renewal Commission might own it.
I'm not sure. I think, I don't know if there's a specific disposition of the land that makes it surplus or if it's just land that we own that hasn't developed.
All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Musson?
Yeah. Nope. Go ahead.
So just a couple of questions here. In Oregon itself, the population more recently has been decreasing. Have we entertained any room of error in terms of what we're proposing in the future? Second, are we considering any livability for the current residents when it comes to environmental with trees and green spaces? Because currently, the SDC fees for our city goes to new parks, not current parks. So any, any information about that in the future?
Sure. So your first question was, sorry, remind me.
First question was about population that we've been actually decreasing.
Okay, thanks.
I think, and so are we entertaining error in terms of adjustments in the future if we do actually see a population decrease? Because when we talk about affordable housing, even though we're building more houses, the, you know, supply and demand in terms of, you know, building materials cost a lot still. So I'm just curious about, you know, if the population, we entertain population decrease. Second of all was about livability for the residents in terms of parks and trees and wetlands. Thank you.
Thanks.
I can take the first question if you want, Kelly. And thanks for the question, Commissioner Musson. Essentially, we are in such a deficit in housing that we could build for, you know, we could build for 10 years at the goal that we've set and still not be where we need to be. So the, the goals are ambitious. We're not going to get all the way there. And I think even, you know, even if we see a massive decrease in population, we're, we're still, we're still in a deficit. So I hope that, I hope that helps sort of put, put the, frame, frame out the nature of the housing shortage problem. Kelly, I, I am not sure so much about the green spaces, not something that comes across my desk much.
Sure. I can answer that one. And I will add too that, you know, each jurisdiction in the metro area will do their housing capacity analysis every six years. So at that point, you will look at the, the population forecast again, right? So if the trend changes where maybe you're not going to grow as much, that's the point at which you'll say, oh, okay, actually, we are going to have this number of units in the next 20 years based on our population forecast. So that's where it gets adjusted every six years. You'll do that. So regarding design standards, I don't think, so none of the legislation that we talked about and, and, you know, none of the, you know, statutes really say that cities can't apply their design standards. So Oregon City has, you know, design standards for open space, for tree protection, right? For the features of a building and what, what it looks like. And those are all, you know, those can be applied and you can maintain those in your code. I think one thing that some cities are doing, they're realizing that some of their design standards are maybe a little bit too strict and they could be, they could lessen those or be more flexible in order to reduce the cost of construction for new housing. So, you know, there might be something that, that folks can do there to, to change things. But generally, you know, every city has these standards and can apply them. And I think open spaces, you're right, right, about SDCs, right? They go to new parks. And, and so, you know, I think the, the tax, the tax base also increases when you increase the number of units. So hopefully, hopefully, you're getting more property tax and therefore more money in the budget for maintenance of existing parks. But that's all I can really say there. Thanks for the question.
Is there any drive to change the zoning categories to fit the middle housing stuff at all?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, because it's weird now because like the difference between like an R6 and an R8 or an R7 or whatever isn't really that much. You know, you can almost get the same units per acre. And then when you look at the middle housing and the number of units that you can get per lot is almost a wash in terms of how many houses you can actually get on there. And it just seems like you'd want to, like, maybe you'd want to have like maybe a special zone for cluster housing or something, something like that to sort of designate certain areas that would, that would be more conducive to that kind of use or something like that instead of just having this smattering of allowable uses throughout the whole zoning designation. But I, you know, and then the other part of it is, you know, the other weird part of it is, is the, the worst-case scenario. So when planners look at zone changes, they look at the worst-case scenario of, you know, what the current capacity of that zone would allow. And now we're looking at, you know, court cases are having us look at worst-case scenario in a completely different way in, in that we are looking at how much capacity will that zoning designation, that land mass will actually provide in light of, in light of middle housing. So it's a bit of a change.
Right. For new developments, I think it is interesting to see how, how the middle housing provisions will play out, right? I think what we, using some data, I believe from Echo Northwest, I think the estimate for existing neighborhoods, as far as how much more density will be added due to HB 2001, you know, the, the, from what the data can tell us and what the economic assumptions tell us is that it, 3% growth is kind of like a safe assumption. So that's, that's a pretty small amount in the existing neighborhoods, right? From, you know, adding, you know, duplexes and cottage clusters and, you know, here and there, like you said, a smattering, smattering.
Right, right. And, and the trick in that is, is coming up with, like, when you have like a cottage cluster or something that's allowed ministerially, to come up with the analysis for providing the infrastructure for that, for that use, like storm and sewer and all of this kind of stuff. Because usually we have, you know, one house, one lot. And, and, you know, it's a fairly formulaic way of coming up with, you know, how much sewer capacity is available. Now we're looking at, you know, more and the same infrastructure. And so, you know, so that, I think the discussion probably needs to follow on how that's all going to be done at the ministerial level to, to have all that infrastructure catch up with, with the, with the housing production.
Right, yeah. And there are provisions in the, in the middle housing code, which I believe Oregon City kind of copied over to your code about sufficient infrastructure to serve. So if there's not sufficient infrastructure... So if there's not sufficient infrastructure, you can't approve it. So you have, you know, that's been provided for, but I think it does put more the onus in the work on the Development Services Department, right, to determine whether that capacity is available or not.
Well, it either puts burden on the building inspector or the plans examiner, or it puts, you know, it brings in a planner to review the ministerial land use, the, you know, duplex, fourplex, four houses on one lot, whatever, to see if that actually fits.
Commissioner Slough and Offler?
Yes, thank you. A short cable. Okay, Ms. Reed, is there a way to bring up that slide? I think it was the last slide, the one that showed what the different cities had for incentives? Newport, okay. The one I wanted to bring up was, yeah, that's the one. Okay, the one I wanted to bring up was Newport. The adopted variable rate SDCs to ensure smaller units pay proportionally less, now I'm going off memory. Pop-up. Okay. Less SDCs based on the size of the home. I'm not sure how involved you were with that. What, if anything, is in place to ensure that those savings to the developers actually get to the home buyers and doesn't just benefit the developer?
Yeah, I've heard this question before, and thanks for the question, Commissioner. I think that a lot of folks are asking that, and I think that what, you know, over time, we'll be able to maybe track and see what the effect of these structures are. I don't know that we have any data from Newport that shows, you know, what the impact is and what the housing, has it had an impact on housing prices? I don't know. I think that DLCD, that's something that we plan to, you know, do some research on and provide, because this is a common strategy that a lot of cities are considering doing. I think one thing that it does, regardless of whether the cost gets passed on or not, I think, or the cost savings gets passed on or not, I think what it does do is it doesn't lead developers to just go as big as possible because they pay the same fee anyway, right? Because if you're going to pay a really high SDC rate, you're probably unlikely to build a 1,000-square-foot unit, right? You can get a lot more money when you sell a 3,000-square-foot house than when you sell a 1,000-square-foot house. But if you pay a lower SDC for that 1,000-square-foot house, maybe you're more likely to build it in the first place. So I think that's part of the reason that some cities are doing it. And just for, you know, to be fair and equitable, right? Like, there's less impact on the system from a smaller unit with fewer people in it. And so why should they pay the same as, you know, the 3,000-square-foot house with five bedrooms? So that's all part of the case that's made about those variable rate SDCs.
Okay, great. Do we have one more? Sure.
The HCS also recently published a great study on SDCs in Oregon, Oregon Housing and Community Services, and we can send that over to you all. I think it's probably great reading.
The next one is, remind me what the name of the development is across from Albertson's? Okay, that one, do we know how, okay, that's quite a subsidy, 30% to 60% of the mean income. So that's, you know, that's quite a bit. Is that state or county money that does the subsidizing on those rents?
So maybe you can speak to the, who's running that housing? I think that's better answered by city staff.
So the, I don't know how to answer who's subsidizing the rents, but the funding for developing it came through the Metro Bond that was passed a couple of years ago for affordable housing and spread out between the three counties and some of the larger cities. So the county housing authority was in charge of that funding, if you will, and so they had that Metro Bond funding to fund the development of that project. And then it's going to be run by a nonprofit called CDB, Community Development Partners, how that will work.
Okay. Do we know how long those rents are guaranteed?
No, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a couple. Going back to the governor's executive order, I have the slide here on my phone. It says, "More than half of the new units must be affordable to people making 80% or less of area median income." What's the enforcement mechanism on that? If it's, I mean, do you get to half of the production and you can't allow any more until low-income or met, how does that work?
I am very cautious about what they want to announce, and I know part of what the governor is working on is an accountability mechanism that is sort of yet to be stood up. So again, the EO is just a, it's a statement of intention, but it's not a hammered-out policy. So this is definitely one of those things to circle back to.
Is this something that would show up later as an OAR based on the executive orders? Is that kind of how that practically works? Is that how the process works?
I think it could. I'm not exactly sure where, you know, if this is something that will turn into a bill that will go through the legislature, that will go, you know, become a statute, or if it's just something that will actually be a, you know, monetary commitment to support. So a lot of unknowns, and I'm sure someone who's been through this legislative, this is my first session, so I'm just getting to know what this process looks like. But I think it's a great question, and I think a lot of cities and a lot of planners are wondering what these accountability mechanisms are going to look like. So you are not alone, and we're happy to circle back when we know more to talk about it again.
Okay. And then I think it's the third to the last slide about the House Bill 2001 from this year rather than previous years. It says, "Empowers cities to take actions that meaningfully increase housing production, affordability, and choice." Empower implies to me a choice, and from what I understand of this bill, it's mostly a requirement. So what choices will the cities have? I understand the bill hasn't passed yet.
Right. So choice in this case does not refer to cities. Cities will not have a choice. Cities must do this. What this legislation does is it provides, it helps cities identify the barriers. So is it capacity? Is it funding? Do we need to bring in a consultant to do the work that, you know, your overworked city staff can't do? So we, I think cities want to build housing, the state, you know, needs to build housing, the governor is recognizing that housing needs to be built. So everybody has essentially the same goal here. It's just about identifying the barriers and, in terms of the word empowering, I think it really means providing the support that a city needs to get it done.
Gotcha.
In the way that the city wants to do it, you know? And there's still a lot of options within it. It's just, you know, the units that the city needs to build, the city needs to build. And then beyond that, it's just about helping the city get there.
I'll add that that legislation also includes some funding that would go to cities, you know, through DLCD to help, you know, support the cities in doing that work. And that, you know, the governor's order, it's a goal, right? Like the 80%, it's a target, it's a goal. Like Thea said, there's no, there's nothing behind it, no enforcement mechanism behind it yet. But it really does match with, you know, your housing needs analysis that kind of identified that same kind of ratio, right? Half of units, about half of units are needing to be at that level, at that income level or below.
Yeah, my main concern with anything like that is, you know, enforcement basically involves a moratorium on one type until enough of another type gets built that the ratios equal out. And that seems like a bad idea. That seems counterproductive.
I'm pretty sure that's not on the table at this point.
Okay, that's, yeah, that was just my, how I saw it. Any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you both for coming, and Ms. Reed, it was great to see you again.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
And, you know, you have any communications from the?
Not on the work session.
Okay, sounds good. We're adjourned, we'll take five minutes and start the regular meeting.